We may have a problem with.
We do have a problem. I'm gonna put it on your lap.
Well, short of voting, yeah, we'll probably have to continue something.
Are you good, Dustin? Like to call this regular Bayfield Town Board meeting to order for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 at 6:32. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Here.
Trustee Zizaro. Trustee Hartz.
Here.
Trustee Katzos.
Here.
Trustee Moreland. Trustee McLaurin. And Mayor Ah.
Here. All rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does the board have any conflicts of interest besides myself?
No.
Nope.
No.
So I have a conflict of interest with the Pine River Commons, which is items 3A, or no, excuse me, 2A and 3A. Which means we're not gonna have a quorum.
My suggestion is that at the appropriate time, whether it be now or just before hearing that matter, we take a short recess and attempt to contact.
Okay.
Perhaps Trustee Zizaro to see if she's going okay.
Okay.
They both say they weren't gonna be here.
We did get an email from Trustee McLaurin saying she wasn't gonna be able to attend.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Is there any public input for any items not on the agenda?
Just like a toothache, I keep coming back. Phyllis Ludwig, 9205, County Road 521. Some time ago, when our former town manager was here, we've had a little problem in the past of things being stolen off of the deck at the senior center. And she wrote up an agreement and signed it that the town would take over the furnishings at the senior center and replace them if they were stolen. Well, we've had another table and four chairs stolen. That only leaves us two. We started out with five. So I just thought I would bring it to your attention and you can do whatever you need to do. My husband and I, at one time, bought a login chain and a big lock and chained them all together. And then the people that ran the hall wanted to use it, so instead of unlocking it and letting them use it and locking it back, they just unlocked it all. So now we're down to two instead of five. So I'd appreciate if you'd give it some attention. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public input?
Hello, I'm Rachel Davenport and I'm on County Road 509. But today I am representing the Bayfield Heritage Days and Sheep Trailing, and I've just come to say thank you to the board and the town staff for their support and their help for us getting this event together and to invite you all to consider having a float or a booth at Heritage Days, just to reach out to constituents and just be part of the festivities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public?
Good evening. David Black, 606 Buck Highway. Want to speak to you about a couple of things. I know Jackie Moreland had come and speak to the board on more than one occasion and talked to you about honoring Ed. Ed Moreland. Of course, we know Ed to have served this community for a long time, either as a trustee, and when he couldn't serve as a trustee, he served on the planning commission, and as soon as he could get off, get back on the board, he'd get back on the board. But he was always there. And he was that institutional knowledge that went back to the 70s that really meant something. And I think it would be good for the board collectively to think about honoring Ed and make, because this is something that happens once a year. I mean, he was honored by the governor. There's Ned Moreland Day. I know that it's probably passed for this year, but it'll come up again at some point. And when it does, we should make certain that Ed is honored publicly, have his family here, and dedicate a portion of this park to him. Now, I realize that you guys, you guys had somebody down here, a whole group of people down here, asking that park be dedicated to a young man. And I get that. Loss is a big thing. But service to the community is a huge thing. It really is. So I want you to give that some thought. On another subject. You know that I spent a lot of time and effort defending the access off of Mill Street back to what I once owned there on Southwest Street. Recently, and if you guys will refer to the letter I sent you, I tried accessing Southwest Street as a point of just ingress and egress and found it to be blocked. Well, that's the oldest road that accesses all of that area there on the other side of the ditch. And for it to be blocked off, I find just a little bit outrageous. So I would like for the town, through their mechanisms of enforcement, to make certain that the owner of the property there gets his crap off the road, because it is the town's road and it needs to be gone. And the very last thing, why are you still here, Alexis Hartz?
Any other public input? Next up is approval of the agenda. Does the board had a chance to look over the agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next is the public hearing for Pine River Commons, which I need to excuse myself for.
And again, my suggestion is that, okay, well, my understanding is that the chief actually tried to text Miss Trustee Zizaro.
I did too.
She hasn't responded, so it may be appropriate and unfortunate that the board continue this matter, these two items, until this board has quorum.
Can we, or I guess if we haven't heard from her by now, we're probably not going to. I was gonna say, move it to the end of the, later in the meeting?
There's a suggestion that perhaps the chief can give her a buzz, find out if she's all right, whether she's gonna attend.
It is highly unusual.
Yeah.
Yeah, she usually responds somehow.
Yeah, very much so. If you'd like to go out of order, perhaps, start moving on to.
I was gonna say, is it okay with the board? Then we need to go back to approval of the agenda, and can we move this item, line item down somewhere?
Yeah, perhaps move it towards the end of your agenda before.
Make it after, after number five?
That'd be appropriate.
So we're gonna have an amendment to the agenda. Someone could make a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda as amended with points two and three moved to after point five?
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes.
I just got response from Lori, and she will not be here. She is actually in Grand Junction, and she notified town two weeks ago that she was gonna be in Grand Junction. Maybe it's with our new email system.
Sounds like your new email's working great.
Because she said that it went to both town manager and town clerk. So, okay, so we're gonna have to maybe put that on the next agenda, move it to the next agenda?
That is my suggestion, so it's not a further inconvenience.
Yes.
The applicant or your contract planner, perhaps you can reschedule this to a time when everybody's gonna be available. Brad, are you available in a couple of weeks?
Probably not.
Probably not? Okay.
I'll check my schedule real quick. Yeah, I think I should be here.
So what's that, October?
7th.
No.
7th or?
September 30th.
No, there's not a meeting then. It's the first Tuesday in October.
The 7th, yes.
Is it the 7th?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, but yeah, we have another project.
Okay. So what'll, it sounds like what's gonna happen, the applicant's gonna be available, and we will have a pinch hitter for Ms. Dossdale to present on that day.
John.
And that'll be Town Manager Waters.
I hear he's a good.
Apparently he's filled in and.
I hear he's a good pinch hitter.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna reschedule this for the 7th?
Dates are?
Tuesday, the first Tuesday in October. The 7th, I believe that is.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to table the Pine River Commons Planned Unit Development Guide Agreement, Point 2A and 3A, until the next meeting on October 7th.
And to be clear, perhaps that motion should also add to ensure that there is a quorum.
Can I just add that to ensure there is a quorum?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is approval of the minutes. Department reports and financial statements. Approval of the minutes for 9/2/2025. Has the board had a chance to look over the minutes from September 2nd?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve of the minutes of 9/2/2025.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Any public input? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. August 2025 financial statements and sales tax. Has the board had a chance to look over the financial statements?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a way to know, like, we've had two businesses come into town now, well, one just started, I know, but Tractor Supply just started as well. Can, at some point, I'd like to see what the sales tax numbers are without the new businesses added? I'm just out of curiosity, more than anything, to see if every, because we're showing a big increase, but I don't know how real that increase is.
Okay, I'll look into it.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? We're looking for acceptance?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the August 2025 financial statements and sales tax.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Any public input? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next is Chief of Police report.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. I submitted my monthly. If you have any questions, let me know, but there's a couple of things I really wanted to go over. I announced last meeting, our last monthly, that we had everything covered for Brooks Academy. Everything that was sent to the state that was referenced to her housing was denied at the state level. There are certain reasons, because she's not certified. There's like a lot of little sub-things we have to comply with, and her not being certified, she wasn't eligible for that coverage. But I had saved money in my training account, knowing that we were going to have to cover a lot of expenses for her, so we will, we do have enough money in my training account to cover it. The next one is La Plata Youth Services. We did cancel our contract with them. They reached out to me last week and offered to do 2026 for free. So we're gonna, I talked to the judge. He says, we'll keep utilizing them, but we'll have the other system that we have also onboard in case the parents want to use that instead. So we'll have two options for the juveniles. The next thing is the traffic crash data that was attached. We started our IGA in October of 2023 with the county to provide extra traffic enforcement across the corridors here. They were averaging about 22 to 23 accidents a year between mile marker 101 and 104.5, which is kind of like almost a whole thing of Bayfield. So far this year, we're at 10. And so us being out on 160, doing a lot more patrol activity out there, you can see the reduction in accidents. Outside of that, if you have any questions, just let me know.
I just have one. You said, what's the other deterrent besides La Plata County Youth Services that you, that you guys use?
I think it's called SEMA, S-I-M-A. It's a company out of Denver that allows the juveniles and the parents to do stuff online. So, and it's at a greatly reduced cost. I think, it all depends on what the charge is, what they're being charged with, is how much that course costs. And they range between $75 and $100. And so we are putting some of our funds to the side for next year, in case we had to do that. We want the parents to pay for it, but they'll be able to apply for assistance in taking these courses online.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Public Works Director report.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees. So we had 79 on-call tickets, which is about average for where we're usually at in August. The one thing, we did get bids back for the generators at the water and booster pump station. That memo and recommendation from our engineer did not make it in the packet. So we'll have to continue that over. You'll be seeing that on October 7th, talking to Clerk Hayden. We do have to have those action items posted for 24 hours prior to that, so that's why you're not seeing that in here. Storm drains, we've been able to keep up. The Public Works Department's been pretty vigilant in removing debris and keeping those clean, so no negative impacts with all the rain we've got. So that's a plus. That's really all I, all I have to mention unless you guys have any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. HR Director.
Good evening. Okay, we'll start it out this month with a lot of professional development, went to DARM and the Chambers Employment Law Update for 2025. So that was great. Also went to a SIRS membership lunch, so we could get our checkmark for our workers' comp audit next year. I also did a lot of hiring, posting for positions. We interviewed for the utility clerk 2 position and promoted Renee Reed, who is currently a 1, now she's a 2, so we're excited about that. And we advertised for the town planner, office manager secretary, as well as the utility clerk 1 position. So for the last two, we had 69 positions, 69 applicants for the office manager secretary position, and I think 45 for the utility clerk position. So town planner, not as many, but we still got some qualified applicants for that. So working on interviews, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we will have some hires. We received our first DOT audit, so Jeremy hasn't been involved with that either of I, so we gave everything to Eclipse DOT, and we'll just wait for them to see if they need anything else. Let's see. No before training, the cybersecurity, we're still continuing to do that. And then I created a HR graphic with recognition to staff, training, some kind of resources. So I'm hoping to do that every month, but just to acknowledge staff, because I think that's really important, because we do have some all great staff here. Any questions?
You had some really good applicants for the utility 2?
Correct.
Did none of them want the utility 1?
We actually encouraged them. Where they were looking, I think it was more toward the office manager position, so we did encourage them to apply for that position.
Got it. Okay.
Any other?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Action Agenda items and discussion. SEH addendum for the East Side Intersection.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees, what I have before you is the the Second Amendment to the contract that we hired SEH to handle the engineering work necessary to design and get the East Intersection through all of its clearances. So that would be through the environmental, through the cultural resources, all the things that are required by the grants that we now have. This will cover all of that up to, and including the bidding process, to get it out for construction. Normally, this is done at the very beginning, when you anticipate the project is going to anticipate more money than you can handle in your budget. We kind of knew this was going to be an expensive project, at whatever level, it was gonna require some federal grant money. In order to do that, you have to meet different levels of compliance, different clearance levels. And so in addition to that, DOLA requires a separate 90% completion review, which is a process that our engineer has to go through. They would not have gone through that under a smaller project under the access program, but it is required for this additional grant. In future, when we go forward with these engineering agreements, instead of just utilizing our on-call agreement, which is what we had originally with SEH for the project, which didn't cover a lot of this, we're going to go out for an RFQ for engineering services that will include all of this in it. So we front-end load that. We don't have to bring it back. If, if, for example, we know this project has, has an amount on it that requires assistance, your drainage program, looking at each of those drainage projects, when you break those out, those will probably be projects that rise to that level as well. So when we go get engineering for that, we will put out an RFP that will include all of that in it, so that when we get it, we know what they're going to provide, all the way to the point of construction management. Now, note that I put in here that construction management is not included in this. Typically, you get that second set of eyes that are independent of that, to watch the construction, to make sure that the construction happens in compliance with what the design is. That will go out through an RFQ, that particular process. The construction also will go out through the RFP process as well. So those will be competitive. We will put those out, but this will get us to the point to where we have a truly shovel-ready project, which means I can then take that and go get additional grant money for the rest of the project. So this is really needed for a couple of reasons. Number one, we should have had it done already. I think we all have talked about that and how important this is to us. I did talk to SEH. They've committed to me that immediately after, if we approve this tonight as a town, they will then immediately pull the trigger on all of these different entities. So the surveyors will be out here as soon as they get approval from CDOT. Those folks will be on the road. I've thrown in an added, an added item that I want the road to be safer for the people that are out there working in the highway, which will also have the secondary benefit of being safer for our citizens, in that while they're out there doing the clearances and the survey during the entire period of time, I've asked that they drop the speed limit down to 45. I've talked to CDOT about that. It'll be temporary. It, you know, so once they're done, it'll go back up, but at least folks will see that, and they won't hit folks that are working out there in the rideaway. Plus, we're gonna have cars pulling out there, having to drive around folks that are gonna be working in there. And obviously, when we get to the construction phase, it will slow down there as well. CDOT will have a permanent, a way to permanently evaluate that, once we get the intersection done. But I thought, just for the time being, whenever we can get to start reminding people, hey, slow down, there's gonna be a construction project here soon, especially those of us that live up here, it'll maybe get embedded in their mind that we better slow down if we come up that hill from Pagosa. So that's part of this. It's $110,300 to complete the additional work. I've evaluated what they've got. It's not unreasonable, given the type of project we have. And again, it will allow me to then go forward with a build grant or one of the other grants that are offered there, to tell them that I have something that is now truly shovel-ready to go forward with. And that's, that gives you a lot of points when you move forward. There are other points that you receive for public-private partnership. I'm currently talking with some of the folks out there that have expressed some interest in helping out with that. Anything helps in getting those points, because we compete with hundreds and hundreds of cities. It's not just Colorado. We actually compete nationwide against some of those grants. So any way that we can help make our project look like it's more ready to go, and that we've got more buy-in from the community and the businesses, will give us more points. So that's, that's my goal, is to turn the best application in possible for the project that's most ready to go in this area. And knock on wood, we'll be able to, if not with the build grant, some of the other grants that are being offered, get some additional money, so that, again, we can get this project done, because it is a vital project. And my goal is, and I've expressed this to SEH, we will break ground on this. We will have a groundbreaking ceremony in '26. The DOT, CDOT didn't think that was the case, but I, you know, I think that it can be done. I think our engineer thinks that it can be done as well. So that, that's our goal. We'll have a ceremony out there with everybody with golden shovels and show everybody that we can do this on time. So that's what I'm shooting for. I ask that you please approve this amendment, and we'll get started on it tomorrow morning, first thing.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Out of the 2022 scope of services, how much of that was deliverable? How much of it was completed? Because in the 2022 scope, project scope, they, they listed what each phase was going to be addressed, and then their deliverables. And I'm wanting to know if they've met all the deliverables in this scope of 2022.
Because of the way that, and Trustee Katzos and Mayor, because of the way that this was written, there are some of those deliverables that were final design, that because we've had to throw in this other phase in between, we haven't met those yet. Those, those that are dealing with the final design portion of it have not been met. The other deliverables up to this point have been met. We got to the 60% design phase. You know, what, what we're stopped on right now are those processes that were thrown in when we got the additional money. So we do have a little bit of that left to do that's covered under the initial grant, or the initial contract. But the stuff that we're looking at right now, all of this additional, is additional work that needed to be done as a consequence of getting the other, other money. So yes, yes, there is some stuff left, but this has to happen first before they can finish it entirely.
Okay. And then the, the amount that we were billed, what of that has been paid? So out of the total project, the original 2022 project of $245,685, how much of that have we paid?
And I would have to refer to our Finance Director on that. We had 200. I, I know that the, it is somewhere south of 250. I know that the, it is somewhere south of two hundred and fifty, if I remember correctly. I, I can get that exact figure for you, but we haven't expended all of the five hundred thousand that we were, we were provided by the, the school system, and that's, the, the additional monies are more than enough to cover this. And it's good, because your grants, remember, are all bricks and mortar grants. The seven hundred thousand and the, the monies from Congresswoman Boebert are just for construction. So we have to pay for what are called soft services or design services out of that five hundred thousand. So we still have more than enough to handle that, and to take care of that moving forward. Had we gone out for RFQ, we probably could have used some of that money as well for the design, but hindsight's 20-20, but that's...
So would I find that amount in the street fund, or in the capital improvement fund? The monies that we've spent, and the monies that are allocated? I was looking at these, and it confused me. I couldn't tell where, where we were identifying the East Intersection in our budget.
And, and I apologize for that, for my predecessor, it was all grouped in together with your capital improvements. That will be broken out. And I will tell you that, that a lot of the grants that we received, the federal grants in particular, require you to segregate those out in your budget. So that's one of the things that you will see in the new budget, is each one of those grant agreements will be broken out by the grant number, and what they're, what they are, so that we will know exactly what we have left, what we've spent. That's very confusing for me as well. That's one of the things that I know I've been, I've been drilling our, our finance director about, that everything kind of got lumped together. And I, I don't like that, I'm, I'm more of an organization freak, I want to make sure that everybody knows where that money's coming from, how much that money's spent. And the way that it's kind of put in right now, it kind of just, it asks you, it asks you to have a leap of faith, because it's not broken out. That will be broken out on next year's budget. That is something that I've been spending quite a bit of time to, to separate those out. And any future grants we get, you're going to see a grant number, because the federal government's pretty particular about that. They don't like co-mingling of funds, so it'll be a separate fund. We get a CDBG grant, it'll, it'll say, "CDBG Grant XYZ Fund" at the end of that, which means we'll transfer money into that for the matches, and then you'll have the grant money itself coming from the feds into that particular fund. Another reason is the federal, a lot of the federal grants don't require you to keep it and gain interest on it either. So that's another reason why you have to separate it out, so that they can see that this particular grant, when you do your single audit, that, that everything is, is exactly as the grant agreement says, and you don't have to pull that out of these other areas. And, and see, that's, that will be a problem perhaps, for an auditor to have to pull all of that out. I did read, for example, the TAG grant, another grant that we've got, it does require complete segregation, like mo-most of those that I'm familiar with. So you're going to see that be pulled out as well. That's another one that you don't, you don't see currently in the budget, it's kind of grouped into the housing. That's, that's going to be pulled out, and you're going to see a separate, you know, a, a separate line item just for that. And, and if it's a federal grant, you'll see a separate fund for that.
Well, I appreciate what you're planning on doing in the future. I guess, when I look at us bouncing these numbers around, you know, and I understand that, that the scope changed, because it went from an access to a CDOT project, oversight project, I get that. It's just that, when I look at these funds, I just, I just want to make sure that I understand that we do in fact have the money for this, and that it's reflected somewhere in the budget. So the only thing I could deduct was, with that 500K, is that it's under street funds below or in the total capital outlay? Does that sound right? It's a total of actual, year-to-date actual is six hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-two. So does that seem right?
It's, that's much more than it is. Basically, the, all the contract together, the total amount that will be paid with the hundred and ten thousand, is going to be three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
I got that.
That'll be the total amount, so it will not exceed that amount.
And then out of that five hundred thousand, what was the original intended expenditure for that amount?
It was literally for the, the design and construction of said intersection.
So when you say construction...
Design and, they, they actually provided it, as I understand it, as a, use this for the intersection.
Right, okay.
And so, when you go forward with, with a grant application for the future, those are good things to have in there, because they give you the latitude to use it in a number of different areas. That's, in, in all the, the grant applications that go out there, you'll have that ability, but we do have the ability to use that for engineering. CDOT is aware of that as well. You know, we, in fact, they've, they've helped me through the process of giving me a history lesson, where we are today. So I am confident that the number that we have, the three fifty-five, will not be exceeded. That number is coming out of the five hundred thousand that we were provided by the school system. So we will still have additional monies, which will also be necessary for the construction management portion. So we'll, we'll use that to pay for that engineer to oversee the construction, to make sure it gets done on time and according to the contract.
Do we have at all any sort of ball, pig, ballpark figure of what this entire project is going to potentially run?
Three point two million.
Three point two million?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're going to need to come up with three point two million?
We're, we're short about one point two, one point one to one point two million in construction costs. That's my estimate right now. When the final design comes out, that may change, because obviously, there's been your CPI, you know, you've, you've had some, some inflation since that time. But, you know, I usually, when I, when I go out for a grant, I try to get a little bit of a buffer on that, because things are always more expensive than you anticipate. So right now, the number's three point two million, I'm not going to tell you that it's absolutely going to cost that, just because of the economy, but that's, that's the ballpark we're shooting for. I shoot a little bit above that, to make sure that we cover the two point seven percent CPI that we've had over the last year. I think that figure came out about a year ago, your, your three point two million estimate.
So I'm, I'm sure you've done research to find out what kind of grants are maybe currently available, that you're going to be able to pursue. Because my concern is, is, and I understand, any government project of this scope changes and, and morphs, and then if you have time lapses, like we did, we had quite a bit of a time lapse, it just, the, the cost goes up with that. So I, I think what I'm, and I don't know that you can answer this, but I know you've done research. My concern is, is, you know, are we going to get this to that point, and then we're not going to have the funding, and it's going to sit, you know, on a shelf for the next three years or something, until maybe some more money opens up? And then we're going to have to kind of go back and do this? Or do you feel that, that, you know, I'm not against this project, so I don't want it to sound like I am. I'm just wondering about, every time we turn around, it's like, oh, it's another hundred K, or, you know, two hundred K, or whatever. So, you know, how do we be as, as responsible towards how we spend money in this effort to try to get this done? You know, in an expedited way, realistically?
Mr. Mayor, Trustee Katzos, that's a great question, and, and you are right. If you don't lead it properly, and you, you short, you have a shortfall, you have to come up with that money somehow. I will tell you that, from a grant perspective, I have done research, there are grants that are available, I've been given an advance notification of a grant that's supposed to be announced in, in the fall. That is a nationwide grant I'm going to be competing against, and all of these are competitions. We're competing against all the cities in Colorado in some cases, all the cities, sometimes counties, and, and, in the state, sometimes we're competing against the nation. But we've got to keep hitting, you know, we've got, if this is, this is going to be a top priority, and it just, these preliminary indications I have, this is a top priority for the town. We are going to hit this thing in such a way that we're going to apply for numerous grants, and, you know, continue to go until we get it. Now, it's not just going to be the grants we're going to apply for. I've, I've talked a little bit in the past about how we have to do a little bit of work sometimes, because it's not just putting the right things down on the paper, and having a great score. It also takes some, some work on the, the part of the governing board, myself, to go visit the right people and say, hey, we've got a grant application in, with, with your level of government, could you watch this for us, and, and maybe give us a letter of support, or something like that? Will be, I can fully anticipate that between the six or seven things that I've seen in your master plans, that we need to go get grants for, many of them are going to require us to go to Denver, and maybe even to DC, depending on the type of grant that we write. So it, it's not an easy step to get this, but nothing worthwhile is ever easy, and we want them to remember Bayfield. We don't want them to ask the question of, where is Bayfield? Or, you know, the only thing they think of is the giant gorilla that sits on the other side of the slope. We want them to remember our name, to remember each one of the faces that go up and visit them, because, you know, that's, that's important to them. And especially, you know, when we've taken the time, as, as a small community, to go to Denver, and to talk to our legislature in the place that they do business, or talk to our, our congressional delegation in the place that they do business, it impresses them. And they may not be able to get us money, but every little thing helps, and that's that extra effort that I'm going to try to recommend that we do, to try to get some of our grants over the, the finish line. Again, will, does that guarantee us a grant? No. But in my experience, that is how little towns beat out big towns for grants, because we, if we take that extra effort, you'd be surprised how many big towns do not do that. So, again, I, I, I can't answer a yes straight away.
No, I understand that.
Because I don't have the crystal ball.
I understand that.
But we have my commitment, that we are going to go out there, and we are going to fight for every penny that's available. I, I feel like this is a project that's been languishing far too long, and it, it will be, come hell or high water, we're going to be out there breaking ground, and we're going to be moving forward with the project. And the effort to get the money for that project is not going to stop. I mean, I literally have been looking at grants, I've been sending information off, requests off to every agency in this state, and even some of the federal folks, that I'm, I'm sure they're going, oh god, it's John Waters again. So I want them to know that, because they know that, you know, I'm, I'm a very squeaky wheel, when I want to be. And I'm sure that seeing our elected leaders up there would really impress them. So, when the time's right, when the time's right.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is there any public, excuse me, any public comment?
Yeah, Brad Blake with Pine River Commons. So in about 2014, I think it was, I was on the Transportation Commission for CDOT, and this was, this intersection was a top priority in, at that time. I think Derek could come up and tell you that they've seen it as a priority since 2007. So this intersection is, is a big deal. I, at Pine River Commons, we're happy to help how we can, we would be interested in partnering and, and helping however we could. It affects the east side of our project, and north side of the project, so we would be more than happy, we really appreciate the push that, that Manager Waters has put on this, because we've, we definitely have felt like it's been languishing too. And we don't think that's right for the, the town of Bayfield, and for safety, and for just in general, the, the intersection. So thank you very much for having this as a priority, I really appreciate it, and I know that it'll, I know that it can, it can happen, just has to happen quickly, because there are some, I think there are some time constraints. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Derek McCoy, I'm an agent for the applicant in the Bayfield East Project, and just to give you a little bit of background, it was 2017 when the school district put the five hundred thousand dollars up. It was in response to two property owners that had joined the intersection, and also the school property, that donated right of way for the Safe Schools Act, and to make sure that, that, that the school got their bond issue done per the Safe School Act, and that they knew that they were going to have to have some better access in the future. So that was the real catalyst to this deal happening back in 2017. To echo what Brad said, a private partnership, private-public partnership in the deal is completely on the table, as far as the principles go in the Bayfield East deal. We know that, that it's going to take an effort, both with you guys, as well as the property owners, to make the intersection happen. So if, if you guys have any questions of me, I'm here to answer them, but I think that time is of the essence, it always has been. Every year, we get the news that the costs have gone up. And if we don't build it, it's, intersections get built all the time, all over the place. So it, it shouldn't be beyond our, our scope here in Bayfield, we can do this, and it needs to be done, it really does. It'll, it'll lead to a lot of new commercial opportunities, and sales tax revenue for the town. It'll hopefully lead to some, some rooftops that are affordable. It'll provide access to not only the school, but the whole north side of town, and it'll take a lot of pressure off of these existing intersections that we have right now, and that really needs to happen. That being said, I'd like you guys to work with the, the town manager to make this deal happen, really would. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Black, I was on the board when this was discussed numerous times, and I actually almost got lost in 2021. It was eliminated from the queue completely, and it took quite an effort to get it back in, in place. So let's be certain and thank those people and the engineers down at CDOT who got this back up and running, because it certainly is important to the town. Three point two million dollars seems to be a drop in the bucket, compared to the seven hundred million dollars that I know that the state is spending on Interstate 70, on my son's project. So let's keep working towards it, you know, if we have to get into our capital funds just a little bit, I think that would be a worthy cause to spend some of that on. I think you could justify it, if you had to, you could probably depreciate that, or look like you could depreciate that out over several years. Thank you.
Any other public input? Any discussion from the board?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the SEH addendum for the East Intersection.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Town manager, performance evaluation discussion.
Enclosed in your packet, you will see what was used in the past for the town manager performance evaluation. I, I did edit and try to make it a little more general, and other than Trustee McLauren making a comment today, she mentioned she would like to see a budget section, and adding, maybe develops a realistic and effective budget yearly, and then forecasts upcoming budgetary needs and adjust accordingly, so I could add that section. I'm just here to see what your thoughts are on this performance evaluation, and to add any changes or edits.
Is there any questions from the board or comments?
Um, go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, are there other examples? I feel like this is really elementary, and it just, it, to me, it doesn't feel that it, it speaks more directly. So I just would like to see other, other examples. Anyways, that's my comment.
I can do that. I would agree with you. But this is what was used in the past, so, but I can, I can look at other performance evaluations and bring them back to the board, if that's what you would like.
I think that'd be great. I'm sure Sherem has examples.
Yeah, and CML, I know. And CML, I know those are there.
Yep.
Okay.
So, John, did you look over this evaluation form?
Mr. Mayor, I have not reviewed it yet. That's something I felt was in the purview of the council. So, if you would like me to review it, I certainly would be happy to, but...
I wouldn't mind getting your, I mean, I want you to be comfortable with how we are evaluating you as well. And I mean, I know it's been a limited amount of time. It's, I mean, you're here two months now. We're looking at doing this in another month. It's, it's not a lot of time, but we did say we were going to do that. So, I want to make sure that we're being kind of fair with you as well.
Yeah, it seems like a 90-day review and 120-day review would be a good idea. I mean, it's just not enough time, you know, to get in and get very knowledgeable about our community. Get knowledgeable about our state. Right? Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's good.
I was just going to add to that too. It's like, I mean, I know you've been here a short time, but I also think that you're like, you're headed a curveball. You're on top of things from what I've already seen. I guess, but I would also like your input on the whole thing too. Like, I think you're up to speed on a whole lot of topics right now that I, quite frankly, I probably wasn't expecting it to, you'd be where you are now.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, trustees, I'd be happy to review it and provide my thoughts on it. Of course, I am at your disposal. As you know, my contract has a, you know, that clause in it about the evaluation. And so, I'm well aware that, you know, I need to meet your level of expectations by that time period. I am trying really hard. So, and it, there are some things that are challenging. I've made no, certainly discussing the budget and understanding what's there has been a challenge and I'm working my way through that. I think I'm making a lot of progress. We've got a great staff here that is helping me understand where these things are, even though I have a lot of annoying questions. Where is this? What does this come from? Why are we doing this? But I will understand it fully by the time we approach the budget deadline. Obviously, we have the priority session that, you know, we're planning on. And that's the next one that we're going to be looking at, the next part of the process. Then I'm going to, as I mentioned before, go over my assessment of the revenues. It's challenging, but I will go over exactly what I have found and give you a realistic budget. And then in working with the department heads, something I guess has not been done. Frequently in the past, department heads have more of an active role in determining what their departmental line items are. And I feel that's really important because they're the ones that are down at the level in the trenches and know when they need to rob Peter to pay Paul from one of the line items, they know how that affects their department directly. And I feel that's important that each one of the directors take an active role in that. And especially not just creating the budget, but during the year, knowing just how much of that line item has been spent and why it's, it's over. Because you see the P&Ls and, you know, I expect each department, I'm sorry. I expect each of the departments to know where their budget is throughout the year so that they can answer questions from any of the board members that are questioning why this line item is over 50% when we're half the year gone by. They need to be able to answer that. And in some cases, they haven't had that at their disposal. So, both from putting the budget together and from, you know, knowing where they are throughout the year, I think is very important. You depend on your staff. We, you know, we have great staff and they're able to handle that. So, you're going to see a more active role from the members in participating in the budget process. But in the end, we only have a pie plate that's so big. So, that's been one of my challenges, making sure that I fully assess a realistic size of pie that we're going to end up with. And then squeezing it down into that pie plate will be my first shot to give it to you and to make recommendations. And then if you feel like it needs, the pie needs a little more sugar or a little more apples, that's, that's the prerogative of the council and we'll make it work. So...
Okay. So, you two will talk about the current evaluation form. And then, because it's, it's interesting because it's also a self-evaluation at that point. So, I think it's important that we, we can see other evaluation forms also.
Sure.
So, that's, that's my two cents.
Happy to do that. All right.
Any other comments from the board? Get enough to go on?
Yep.
Board of trustees reports and request for future agenda items and committees. I was not at the planning commission due to a conflict. I think Matt was on there last week. I don't have anything else at this point in time. Trustee Hartz?
I don't have anything.
Trustee Katzos?
I was re-reviewing and reading our most recent updated comprehensive plan. And in the back of that comprehensive plan is goals that were set for the town. I think it's worth revisiting. It talks about the goals for stormwater. It talks about the goals for reducing water in the town facilities and town parks. It talks about establishing a water-wise education program and a rebate program for water efficiency improvements. It's got also, just, it's got a ton of goals. And so, I think it would be wise for the trustees, if they haven't revisited the comprehensive plan, to just go through the goals and read those. And when we meet for our priority meeting, I think it would be really helpful to review what we have set for goals for our town. And the comprehensive plan's a great over-guiding document for all the other documents. And it's, it reminds us of what we're doing and why we're doing it and not just kind of taking sound bites from meetings. And that's all I have to report.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes, I attended the planning commission meeting. And basically, the planning commission gave a recommendation on the Pine River Commons plant unit development.
Was there any discussion around that development?
There was a lot of discussions. And some really good questions. And Mr. Blake was able to answer, so.
Then I'll go and review that meeting. That'll be good. Okay. I had lots of questions tonight, so maybe they've already been.
Well, a lot of mine was on the aesthetics because how they wanted to change it. Instead of the drainage going front to back, it'll go side to side now. But then I think also there's going to be 10 feet between units. So, but I wish we could have moved forward so you could ask these questions for him.
Yeah.
But that's kind of what we talked about.
Okay.
I would say review that.
Great. Excellent.
That's all I got.
So, upcoming dates of interest would be the trustee board meeting on October 7th. And the goal work session for...
Okay. You know, let's talk about that if you guys don't mind a little bit. So, I sent an email out to everybody because I'm Switzerland, right? I have to get everybody's input on this. So, I got five responses with five different answers. So, I think it'd be better to maybe just pick a day. And I know you guys got busy lives and everything. So, that being said, if you can't make the meeting, and I'm thinking next Tuesday, since we have the three weeks without a meeting, I was thinking next Tuesday. If y'all can't make the meeting, you can email me your goals and we're going to do the dot system. So, if you remember the chaos we had on the dry erase boards, and we've tried that. So, now we're going to do a dot system. And you're going to give me your priorities. I don't want to say goals. Give me your priorities and you have 10 dots to spin. So, if you have 10 and you want to give each one one dot, that's up to you all. Or if you have five, but you feel this one's super important, so you want to put six there, three there, two there, one there, however you want to work that. If you want to make that meeting, you can send it to me and I will put the dots up for you. So, how does next Tuesday sound for those of you that are here?
It works for me.
Yep.
Time?
6:30.
6:30 sound good? Next Tuesday? Perfect. So, like Kat kind of gave us a good segue into that, or trustee Katzos, sorry. Gave us a good segue into that, so start thinking of the priorities. If you guys feel 10's not enough, you want to up it to 50.